If by the end you feel like something you want to share in terms of this was helpful or not, please do that in the chat. It helps us to fine tune the presentations for others and you're always welcome to come back. We'll drop some emails in the chat. I'll drop mine toward the end and we can, if you have any follow up questions on what's presented here. But again, we're trying to give you as much information as we can to help you make an informed choice. Cause we know sometimes the state or the Rutgers sessions don't always go into the details of the different plan options and the costs. One issue we have this year is that the, they started late in getting the information out. So the calculators weren't available. They are available now. You'll see the links in the chat. Um, I'm going to share a screen and then walk through a few of the presentations and then we'll pause. And take some questions, more broad, general questions. And then if anybody has specifics, they can either wait till the end and we'll turn off the recording. Or you can do a follow up email to me or any of the other leaders of our unions here. Okay. All right. So folks can see that that's the link I shared. And so we're going to go to, I'm just going to run through these pretty quickly. The state website should be comprehensive, should have all the information that we're looking for. So I'll just show that to you. It's going to land on the state health benefits program. If you have any other issues with like pensions and stuff like that, this is also a spot where you can get to that. But it talks about eligibility, your plan choices and your cost are probably the two things that are most important here. So I'll just show you this and I'll link through, but you have direct links to the plan comparison. So what you're going to do is go down here for plan. This is plan year 2024. That's the current year. So these are all the, the terms for now. But down here you see plan year 2025. We're going to look at this because these are the changes that you make will impact plan year 2025, January 1. So we're going to go down to the Rutgers group here. So state employees, Rutgers, university hospital and NJIT only. And again, it's because we have the widest range of options for the plan and so we need special charts. Okay. Last year we added Aetna. So all of the existing Horizon plans now have an Aetna equivalent. All of the terms and, and services covered are the same. All of the costs are the same. When you compare the two plans, all right, so then you'll just know that when this is freedom 15, it's the same as NJ direct 15. This is the plan I mentioned that most of our members are in right now. The plan over here, the 2019 plan for shorthand is the newer plan. This is the plan that is less costly. It's based on your salary, not on the premium. So this plan is always going to be lower cost than this plan, the 15 plan, which is the most expensive. The 15, 25, I'll show you down here, a couple of other options. They're just different co-pays and maybe different deductibles, but you don't save a whole lot of money on those plans. All the way through here, the, then on the last page here, you have the, the tiered network plan here on the left. The two versions of it, Aetna and Horizon, and then the high deductible plans. I'll just, I'll, I'll say what I want to say about a few of the plans that probably aren't the greatest options here. High deductible plans, it's exactly what it says. High deductibles, you have to pay your deductible before any of your benefits are covered by the plan. Very, I think there's less than 200 employees across all of state government, all of Rutgers, NJIT and UH that are enrolled in there. And we're talking about maybe a hundred thousand people. So very few people in there and it's exactly because of that, you have to pay a lot before any benefits are covered. So we don't generally focus in on those. I can do follow up with folks if you have questions on that. The HMO, it's the second most expensive plan. It's nearly as costly as the direct 15 or the Aetna freedom 15. But you have no out of network benefit and it requires a referral. So when you have to go to your primary care doctor before you can see any specialist. So you'll have that $15 copay if you're trying to get to a specialist. So the costs are a little bit higher. So there's a barrier to care when you need the referral and there's no out of network benefit. Any of these plans to the left, the 2030 or the 2035 and any of the plans above. They, they all have an out of network benefit and have no referrals needed. With an HMO, it's a, an older style plan. And so you'll probably get more benefit and less barriers to get to receiving care for a lower cost, except for this 15 plan. So I want to really want to zero in on the 15 plan and this for shorthand, the 2019 plan. And explain some of the differences here. The chart's pretty straightforward. When state workers negotiated this, the unions there negotiated this new plan, they moved all of their members out of the 15 plan and the variations. And so they only had the 2019 plan available. For Rutgers, UH and NJIT, when we negotiated it later, we kept all of these as options. So you can stay where you're at if you're in one of those other plans, or you can move into the newer plan. If you're looking for a lower cost plan with, in our view, a high quality benefit. But you'll see when you pay less out of your paycheck, you're going to pay a little bit more out of pocket. So you see specialists on a regular basis. You have to add that up. It's going from 15 to 30. Use the example, if you have an infant and you're at the ER in the middle of the night and it happens a few times, hopefully not. You'll see that there's a difference there. And so these are the factors, your, your family healthcare, your individual healthcare needs. It's going to vary from member to member. And so you want to just contemplate when you see the calculator, what the savings are for you and your plan, and then what your out of pocket increases might be. And just weigh that out and balance that out. What you can do is pick a plan, make a change. Try it out for the year 2025. You can always come back and change back into your current plan or any other plan next October for effective on January 1, 2026. Don't, I don't say that lightly knowing, but doing your research. There's also the Aetna and Horizon website, tools where you can find doctors and make sure that they're in the network. And so the relative, the relevant co-pays would apply and it wouldn't be an out of network benefit. So that, that's the main difference there. And then I just want to jump down. These are just variations on the 15 plan. With the co-pays, for example, 2030 means 20 for primary, 30 for specialist, 2035, 20 and 35. Scrolling down further, this is the one that's interesting and it might work for some members. The example I use is if you live in the New Brunswick area and you use Robert Wood Johnson Hospital and you use Rutgers doctors. That's all going to be tier one in the Horizon network. And so you'll see that primary is five, specialist is 20, ER is a hundred. And if they're, if you're not using them and the doctors and hospitals, for instance, St. Peters, right there in New Brunswick is tier two. You'll see that you'll incur different costs, higher costs for that. So you could do a little bit extra homework here. You might find that all of your doctors and facilities, hospitals are in tier one for Horizon or for Aetna. For example, in New Brunswick, again, Robert Wood Johnson is not tier one for Aetna. It's tier two. And St. Peters is not tier two, it's tier one. So you see they're splitting the market there in New Brunswick. And one is taking, they're inverting the two hospitals. So each of them has one of them for tier one. The thing to point out here is there is no out of network benefit. Horizon is a New Jersey company. And so any providers outside of New Jersey will automatically be tier two because they don't do negotiations with those providers. That happens with the Blue Cross Blue Shield company in that state. So say Empire, Blue Cross Blue Shield, you may have heard of them in New York City. Independence, Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is in Philadelphia. And that's where we might have concentrations of members that live outside of New Jersey. So that they would be all tier two. Within New Jersey, it's tier one or tier two. For Aetna, it's New Jersey is tier one or tier two, and you can find those designations on their website. Because they're a national company, they can negotiate tier one status in New York and in Philadelphia. So you will find that there are hospitals and doctors that are tier one and tier two outside of New Jersey for Aetna. So that's a little bit different for, in the past, we tell people, if you live outside of New Jersey, this might not be the best plan because everybody will be tier two. But if you live in New York, Philadelphia, you might look at the Aetna website and see if your current doctors are tier one. And then you'll just again, do that analysis that if you're in the direct 15 plan, for instance, would you pay, you know, 20 and 35 for tier two? It might be worth it. You may not anticipate high healthcare needs for the year. The added benefit with this plan is that there's a one time $1,000 incentive that comes as a gift card about three months after you enroll. And I would say it's probably by the end of March of 2025, you would get that. And that's yours as long as you stay in for the full year. And it's not linked to like medical expenses and all that. That's yours. It's one time. If you've already been in one of these plans, you can't get it for a second time. So you can't have gotten it because you were in a horizon two or three years ago. And now you're going to go back in, you won't get the incentive a second time. Those are the plan comparisons and I'll pause right there and see if anybody has any sort of general questions.
Do you have a breakdown for dental for Cigna?
We'll get to that after this.
Oh, okay.
Say, if you mentioned Cigna, Cigna is going away as a dental choice. So you will have to, you'll default into the Aetna DPO, I think.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah. My question is, what is the difference in premium?
We're going to get there. Okay. Hold on. We're going to get to there right now. Okay.
Yeah. You did mention 14% increase.
Yeah, I'm going to get there right now. And you have in the chat, we're posting all these links. You can go in there and you can look at their, I'm going to do Aetna because sometimes we favor Horizon, not consciously. This is their calculator for Aetna. The rates are all going to be the same, whether you're looking at Aetna's calculator or, and again, you can go in and you're always make sure you pick the one that says Rutgers, NJIT and university hospital. All right. Because again, we have the, the nine choices. Uh, not everybody has those. Um, you're going to put in a salary figure. You can put it down to your penny. And we'll just use something like 80,000. Medical coverage, let's go with family and you don't have to populate this. There's no choice. You get a plan and then date of hire, let's go with 2007, let's go after for this. But again, you're going to make sure the one plan, the new plan, NJ directs or NJ direct 2019. You get the 2019 added only if you're hired after seven, seven, one, 19 or after. Otherwise it would just say NJ direct or at freedom. So now we're going to hit find premium and then it'll give you an annual amount. And this is for your med, I'm sorry, medical and prescription combined. And so you'll see we have all those choices that we went through, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. You'll see that the most expensive plan is the 15 plan. So $80,000 salary, family benefits, 71, and that's effective on January 1. There is a calculator. I'll see if that, no, in a second, I'll see if the 2024 calculator is there and you can compare with your specific numbers. You'll see the HMO, I said, that was the second most expensive plan, 9532. You need referrals and there's no out of benefit. That's, I would suggest not, not the best choice for your healthcare dollars. And then here's the newer plan, freedom 2019. And you'll see that it's based on this plan, but it has the higher co-pays and deductible. It's, you'll see though, it's $3,600 less expensive. This is what comes out of your paycheck over the year. Divide that by 24 if you're at Rutgers and that's what your bi-weekly contribution would be. And just know that you got 26 paychecks in a year. So two of them, that'll be like a third one in a month. There's no deduction from that third paycheck for those two months. It's just twice a month, two paychecks each month, 24 deductions. And just so you take that number and divide it by that. When you go into the portal and you look, I think it'll give you the amount per month, if I'm remembering. But that should generally add up. If you take that number times 12, you get to the calculator number. And then this is the liberty plus, that's the tiered network plan with tier one and tier two. It's the lowest cost plan you can see here. Um, and so that's always going to be 75% of the value of this plan here, the freedom 2019. And that's the one that has the $1,000 incentive. So 4682, 6243, 9871. So that's just what comes out of your paycheck over the year. Then you're going to balance that out with any higher co-pays when you go see the doctor or you go to the ER or that one time deductible for this plan is a hundred dollars on this plan. So it's not like the high deductible plans. So you'll see that high deductible plans, where you have to meet that deductible. If you're anything is covered in either of these plans, you can get a plan that gives you benefits right away and covers a lot. And again, these plans here, 15, 25, 2030, 2035 are variations on the 15 plan. And they have different higher co-pays and deductibles on these plans. The chart should be able to help you see the differences in the plans. This calculator should be able to show you that. So this is the plan, the 15 and all of these plans below it had the 14 and a half percent increase. So this is what's reflecting here. If you're at $80,000, you're currently paying 14.5% less than these numbers. I'll see if the calculator is available for 2024. I know Horizon shows it. So you can definitely go there, even if you're thinking of picking Aetna, you can use the Horizon calculator to see what the differences are. So let's see. Yeah. All right. So we did this. Use the same example. Rutgers. Looks a little glitchy. Okay. Why don't I back out of this? I'll go to the Horizon calculator. We can look at that real quick. So here's what I'll do is I'll go to 2024 first. We use the same example. You see here at the bottom is Rutgers, NJIT and UH, family. Thinking like Magumi, because our, like our grad members, TAs and GAs have two basic salaries, right? We could use these calculators and come up with the calculations for them. So we have certain employee groups where the salary is the same for everyone. We can pull these and show people what the 2024 numbers are based on that salary. And then maybe the different, maybe three different member spouses and family. So folks can see that in a sort of a nutshell. And maybe send out an email to them. So I'm just thinking through how we can represent this in a more general way to lots of our members. So I'm going to show, this is for the current year and then I'll show what it is for 2025. And so 4481, 5974, 8625. And I just highlight those three because this is where most people are at right now, the 15 plan. And these are probably the most cost effective alternatives, just depending on your own healthcare needs, where you live, right? Can you find in network doctors? But any of these are options for you, right? You can look at them in more depth with that comparison chart and a calculator and see if any of those weren't for you. But you'll see that number 8625, I'm going to write it down. And so we'll see how that changes and I'll do the 5974. Now if we use the calculator over here and we'll just input the same, you'll see, I think, a dramatic difference in what that member would be paying come January 1. Again, if you're, you're in Aetna or you're thinking of moving to Aetna, you can use the Horizon calculator. If you want to do this comparison of current year and the upcoming year with the increases. And it'll show you the same values. It looks a little glitchy in Aetna's in terms of showing 2024 figures. But okay, so the 5974 on January 1st will go up to 6243. So that's what about 270 maybe? And the 15 plan is going to go up from 8625 to 9871. So that's almost 1250. So two, 250, 1250. So you see it's a big difference in what the increase is and it's already, what's the difference? So the, the gap is widened by, by a thousand dollars in terms of the, what you'll pay for next year if you stay in the 15 plan. It may work for you. You may be able to take in that. You may value the benefits that you get in that plan. So just do your homework and think about how your, what your needs are going to be. You have a surgery plan for the coming year. If you have to do anything out of network. If you see or plan to see specialists on a regular basis, whether it's physical therapy, behavioral health. Those are all going to be factors in what you're, what you're going to decide. And again, you have until October 31st, we're trying to get the state to extend it a little bit longer by another week. We have to have the state health benefit commission weigh in on that, but we did pass a resolution yesterday, strongly encouraging them to extend it by a week to give people a little bit more time with the calculators and to take in all this information. And this is all designed to be confusing and complex. And that's the way the system's designed in this country and in this state. We want to make it simpler, but we'll have to make a lot of changes to do that. But your unions are a resource here. I just want to underscore that. You can always come back to us if you have questions. And we'll do our best with the deadlines that are approaching to get you the information that you need to make a decision. So we have another week to do that. What else? I'm going to go back to my main sheet. Again, everybody should have this. We've got Aetna's website. I'll just, I'll jump there real quick. I won't navigate it for you. You can do that, but the headings, medical, dental, move that out of the way in case it's blocking. Don't worry about the Medicare piece, enroll in your benefits, member tools. Okay. So you can just like state plans. So just so you can navigate this, you don't want to look at local government plans or education plans. You're not eligible for those. Those are for different sectors of the public sector in New Jersey. So state plans is where you want to go. Click there real quick. And see, and Aetna is relatively new to the state plans. They don't have a lot of members enrolled, but they do have that national network. They have been a vendor for the state in the past. People like, like them for certain types of plans. And in the past, the Southern New Jersey, Philadelphia area tends to be a little bit stronger for them. I'm not sure if that holds true today, but just trying to share some information with you. Okay. There was something like, oh, this liberty plus, I'll just show you this real quick. When I said that out of state, they have tier one and tier two. So this is New Jersey, tier one, tier two. These are all the hospitals in New Jersey by county. And then in New York, the New York metro area, you can see they have designations of tier one and tier two in the different counties in the New York metro area. Then where's more? And then this is the Philadelphia metro, Southeast Pennsylvania. You'll see ones and twos here. So that's a little more comprehensive in terms of giving you options under the Aetna tiered network plan. Back over here, I'll do this really quick, the prescription, because you can't pick your prescription separate from your medical. So when you pick your medical, these, they're going to line up with a prescription plan. When you look at the, use the calculator, it's going to combine your medical and prescription. So don't worry about that part of it. But these are, are going to be your out of pocket, your co-pays for it. If you do mail order, generics, it's zero. That's an ID date supply. And somebody on here had an experience. And so know that you use the Optum mail order pharmacy. It doesn't apply to all mail orders from different vendors and stuff like that. But really what it does is it's, it's really hassle free. You get the refills sent to you. You don't have to worry about going to a brick and mortar pharmacy. You don't have to worry about weather or travel or things like that. So if that works for you, we want this to work for you because the generics, where they work for you, we want you to use them because they're the lowest cost option, not only saved for you because you can't get better than free unless they pay you to take them. But for the state, who's the other side of this, they pay the, the difference. It's the lowest cost option. So it actually helps us keep the overall cost down. And that's when we can start to improve benefits or keep the rate increases from going up so dramatically. So that's one thing that the unions have fought for to implement, but also to sustain that and keep that as a benefit. But just see that if you do the 30 day generic, it's for the newer plan, it's seven and 16 for brands. So that's when you go to a pharmacy, a physical pharmacy and get a 30 day supply. For the 15 plan, they're a little bit lower. So that's, this is another piece that you might want to look at. If you take multiple medications or you have maintenance medication and you're doing them at a pharmacy. But again, if you can switch to the mail order, then it zeros across the board for any of the plans. What else? Your maximum out of pocket, I think is the same across all of the plans. So that's not a variable. Mail brand is different. So for the 15 plan, it's 15 for the 90 day supply. And it's 40 for, under the newer plan. I'll just scroll down real quick and see. Yep. So the same chart that's on that page, that link will show you what they are for the other plans. Honestly, looking at this, there's not a whole lot of rhyme and reason to why, which plan has the three and the 18. I think that they've been set at different times when different plans were instituted. I think our commitment as unions is to go back and rationalize that a little bit better. And let's see, the last page. They say when you, high deductible subject to deductible and coinsurance being that, but seven and 16, this is the tiered network plan, zeros and 40s. There's anything else here? There's a link here for the Rutgers website. There's two links for the Rutgers website. So I'm going to leave two of those. I think I moved it around. I was, I had it up here and I said, I didn't want people to get lost on a Rutgers website because this is the union's presentation. If you needed to get to Rutgers website, that might show you how to get into your portal. It may show like some upcoming events that they're having, other benefits, right? Flexible spending accounts and things like that. Then what, you're welcome to go there if you have technical questions, right? You may find some things there that are helpful. What else? I should show you, maybe I'll go to the Horizon website real quick.
Here's some, a couple of links, Patrick, in the chat that got added for doctor finders that you might want to paste.
It's about, I was about to go there. I was going to show you, if you go to the Horizon website and go under tools and services and Aetna has the same, a similar thing, find a doctor. It's exactly where I was headed. We can add these in and share them around by email through the different unions. But there's the find a doctor, finding care outside of New Jersey, urgent care centers. Okay. So that's there. We can make it more specific, direct link in that sheet. We can do that right now.
So it prompts you for a dropdown menu. You have to select what your plan is, but the, the names are slightly different than what we have on our chart. So.
Say that again.
Sorry. So especially on the Aetna one, if you choose to find a doctor, to select a plan, one of the choices like Aetna choice POS 2, and then it includes, it says this is the freedom one. Like I think that's what we picked, but you can't find a doctor until you tell it what plan you're looking for.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Do one of the doc finders to show us.
All right. Yeah. Do that. Okay. Plan. So right, you want to always like the, the, with the blue card, I'm not sure where they have them, options that don't have blue card. The blue card is when you, when you go outside of New Jersey, you're technically using the Blue Cross Blue Shield company in that state. So I mentioned earlier Empire and Independence in New York and Philadelphia respectively. The blue card is what allows you to use those networks and get services outside of New Jersey. I'm going to ask the state why or Horizon, why they have these listed with and without the blue card. I'm not sure why that matters. So NJ direct is the new plan and the network will be the same because it's the PPO. So don't worry if you're in the 15 plan. If you click this, it should give you the same, same network. Let's see. Let's do.
If you're looking out of New Jersey, do you have to select the blue card one or do you?
Yeah. Mark it with the blue card to make sure you, you get there. Okay. I'm just going to do New Brunswick. Okay. Just bear with me because I'm not a member of the plan. I'm, I'm a staff of the union. So I'm in a different plan. And so the websites I navigate is going to be different. And so let's see, right, right here, positions. Okay. So NJ is in NJ direct plan. So it should probably only show us the providers that are in network. Uh, but you'll see that it's 7,833 primary care physicians. And I don't know if that's a radius issue. You can shrink the distance. Is that enough to?
Yeah. I mean, I'm more in the weeds of like to decide between Horizon and Aetna because they, as pointed out, right? They have the same premiums. And so the only way to really decide is which one does your doctor take? And so I'm trying to verify.
Yeah. So what I would do is probably look at the, do the calculator for each of them. And then see what your, the price point is, right? What looks good for you, right? What, which ones you would consider. And then I would just go directly to your doctor, if you have current doctors and ask them, do they accept that specific plan? Then I would get more specific. I would say the NJ direct plan or a direct 15, if you're looking at that one. And on the Aetna side, the equivalent plans.
Direct, NJ direct with blue card. Should I save that if it's?
Yeah, it's always going to be blue card. Do you have, you're, you're in Horizon right now. If you look at your medical card, there's a little blue, either suitcase or, or briefcase on there, uh, on the front of the card. Uh, that's, that designates the blue card network.
Yeah, I actually, it's a long story. But I live, I don't live in New Jersey and I'm going to be enrolling. Yeah, I actually, it's a long story. But I live, I don't live in New Jersey and I'm going to be enrolling. So I'm just trying to figure it out. Thanks.
Got it. Got it. Yeah. You have a question?
Uh, but yeah, when you're ready, if we could go back to the Aetna, uh, just, uh, you, right at the beginning, you showed the differences between the kinds of Aetna.
Mm hmm.
Payments, if we could just see that. I'm sorry, because the, the information is now beginning to make a lot more sense than it did before, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Remember those, so right at the beginning, you showed the difference.
The comparison of the different.
Person. Yeah. Right. So you had these three slides, I think, at the beginning.
Yep, this one?
And yeah, now it begins to raise.
Yep. Okay.
So I was hired before 2019, I was like, I'm ancient. So, so we would be at enough freedom 15 if we're behind.
Yeah. So like I said, most people are in the Direct 15, NJ Direct 15, because Horizon was the only option. Now that Aetna has been added, all of the difference really is the previous, Joni, I think it was, the network, right? Which doctors are in their network and which ones are not? They negotiate separately. And so the state doesn't tell them who is in the network. We don't control it to that level. We're essentially, the state is hiring them to provide these network of doctors. So when we say in network, a doctor may be in the Aetna network, Aetna Freedom Network, but not in the NJ Direct Network, right? And so that's what you want to navigate and.
I think most in New York, I live in New York, so I don't know if it's useful to people, but most in New York actually do take Aetna. But I'm going to call all my doctors and find out what it looks like. So do you know about the, the therapy question? If, if Aetna is different on this, did you get any answers on that?
Did not. Like I said, we were, we had to ask the question on the extending the open enrollment.
Okay.
That got a little contentious, contentious, but I'm following up on that.
Okay.
And get back to you. Yeah.
And I'll call, and I'll call up Aetna also.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Because again, if you, if they cover what you need covered, then it becomes a lot easier to make that decision, right?
It does. And thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions?
To get a copy of the slide.
Yeah, it's in the, it should be in the chat. There should be a, a link there and it's got the, this page here. Down here, plan comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Link, right? And the first prescription.
I just wanted to make a comment that I got in the chat because we're getting towards the end and so people might drop off. Somebody sent me a warning that if you're under the care of Memorial Sloan Kettering, they may be ending their agreement with Anthem, which has something to do with Horizon, but I actually don't know how they're related, but people might want to know that.
Yeah. So Anthem is, I believe Anthem is the Connecticut Blue Cross Blue Shield. Anybody can confirm that, um, in the chat. So when we talk about Horizon as a New Jersey company, they may negotiate with them. But if they don't have a direct relationship, then, and they're using it through Anthem and Anthem cuts the relationship, then you don't really get the benefit of that contract because we, that Anthem has with Memorial Sloan Kettering. Because there is no contracts. And so, um, if you're in a Horizon plan, maybe Anthem is the New York State, outside of New York City, Blue Cross Blue Shield. I, I don't know if folks know that and can confirm it in the chat. But that's what's happening. It was Independence's relationship with Children's Hospital, for instance, in Philadelphia. If they severed that contract, they didn't renew that contract and they went out of network. Then they'd essentially be out of network, Children's Hospital or Memorial Sloan Kettering for Horizon members. So those are important. I thought I heard it was Aetna, but that it was, yeah, it was Anthem with Aetna, but we can try to confirm that. Does that help, Ryan?
I think so. I'm going to encourage the person to speak up if they are able to.
I can speak up briefly. So basically MSK had sent a letter out regarding that someone's back and they sent a follow-up letter just yesterday regarding their separation with Anthem, because Anthem doesn't playing fair in the sandbox. So there's severing ties come January one with Anthem.
Okay.
Under, under Horizon.
Under Horizon. Okay. So yeah, I think that's what it is, that the contract, the Blue Cross Blue Shield contract is probably between MSK and Anthem. And then Horizon members get the benefit through that blue card. And so I think, and that's why somebody who is receiving treatment there got that as a Horizon member. Is that's the best I can discern from that information. And so it's really like a warning. It doesn't mean that they won't renew the contract by then. But again, you don't know, you don't have the benefit of knowing that right now. And this is your time to, to switch. One option is to look and see if Aetna has, has, has MSK in network and, and.
It is one of the ones that MSK does. Aetna is one of the ones that they do accept and deal with them, Signa's mothers.
So this is definitely the, this is that, that notion of the networks might be different between the two. And so if you want to see a certain provider, you want to find and make sure that they're in the network. And that's a pretty, pretty big risk. So yeah, you might want to think about Aetna as a choice for January one. But that's, to me, those, these are the hardest things because, right? It's very, it's so disruptive. And it's really, I was in a meeting earlier today, thinking about the problems with our healthcare system. And we're at the whim of their negotiations and either MSK wants more money or Horizon doesn't want to pay more money or, right? Like who's at fault here? But we're all sitting and waiting for them to resolve it and make sure that they stay in network. And literally, these are really important decisions for us and our members and our families. It's not a light decision to make, but you need to make the, the best informed decision.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I had a quick question. Sorry. I've been in and out, so I've missed a lot of the discussion. I was just looking at the calculator. I'm a physician and it looks like there's a very large significant, um, jump for the, I had the 1525. I've had that for the last couple of years. I don't know if going down to the 2019, I have a family plan, so it is a large, significant increase versus the individual. I, I don't know if you gave any suggestions of comparable plans. Cause the, I, I was trying to look, compare the 2019 one, and it seemed that most of the stuff are not terribly different, 25, 30, 100, 150 copay.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure what the big differences as far as out of pocket would be. That would be the main difference of me not, of me going to that or not going to that.
Yeah. The big, do you live in New Jersey or out, out, outside of New Jersey? Okay. We find folks that live outside of New Jersey really have the biggest potential risk. It's the out of network benefit. So for instance, you live in New York City and you see a therapist and they don't take insurance. And so they tell you, pay them. And you're in the 15 plan or the 1525 plan. And they, you pay them and then you process for reimbursement using your out of network benefit. And say if the visit was, let's just use round numbers, a hundred dollars. And you get reimbursed for $75 of that. At, in the 1525 plan, if you, the 29, 2019 plan, it might be some lower amount that you get reimbursed for. Because your doctor is not necessarily, your therapist is not going to take less money from you, right? They're just going to say a hundred is the hundred, right? It's the, that, that plan is lower cost in terms of what you pay out of paycheck. Because some of these other out of pockets are going to be a little bit higher. That seems to be the biggest one where I've had members say, I switched into the plan and I found I got, had to pay more, got less money back for that particular, see, they're a behavioral health therapist. And so that person moved back into the 15 plan, I think in that case, just because it, it was a burden. And that's again, when the copays are different, they're a little bit higher. You just have to think about how often you see a specialist, right? If you're in network. And then on the out of network side, some members have seen that as the doctor saying, I'm not going to really lower what I take from you because you're getting less back. That's between you and the state plan. So that, that's the one area where we've seen some, but I think generally speaking, that out of network difference hasn't really like across the board impacted a lot of members. But I, that's the one niche area where I've heard some members say there's been a, a difference.
Okay. Uh, one other quick question. Under, that was very helpful. Under the durable medical equipment for the 2019 plan, it says 10% after deductible. And for the 1525 plan, just says 10%. You know what deductible they're referring to, which number?
It's that hundred dollar.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure it was like thousands of dollars. Because it looks like it's like almost a four grand-ish, maybe three grand difference in price.
We have to go to the, the chart again, just to see. Apologies.
I think also we didn't state it very directly, but that's basically the sole difference. I've said it in the chat a number of times between NJ Direct with no numbers and NJ Direct 2019 is a hundred dollar deductible that they're basically hitting new hires with for reasons.
It's, it's a significant difference when I did the calculator. Like I was blown away here.
Yeah.
I've already submitted my choices. So how do I go back if I want to switch into 2019? And does this affect any of my cards and stuff? Cause I've never had to change a card because it's been the same insurance information.
It's, so the card actually lists your different copays on it, right? It should.
Oh, yeah.
Right now it's showing you 15 and 25, right? For special. Um, so you'll, you'd get a new card that had the 15 and the 30 if you switched into the 2019 plan, right? And the one.
But, but I wouldn't have to like resubmit like birth certificates and.
No, you're in open enrollment. You're making those changes there and they're going to send you a new card.
Okay. Yeah. All right. This is helpful. Thank you so much.
That's another thing we didn't point out very directly in this meeting. Basically all of the cards say NJ Direct on them if you have that kind of insurance. So do not go by the card if you're trying to figure out what plan you have already. Somebody asked in the chat, if your doctors are taken by both the Horizon and Aetna plans, is there any recommendation specific to somebody from Pennsylvania?
All your doctors and the hospitals that you see, that if, it depends on what plan you're looking, if, if you're thinking about the tiered plan, then it's a question of tier one or tier two. It won't be tier one in the Horizon plan, um, because it's out of state. Um, so.
I'm actually talking about the cheapest one, the ones you were recommending, Aetna and Direct. All of my family's many providers seem accepted by both networks.
Yeah.
How do we pick? It's the same cost. Everything's the same.
It's all the same. And the reason it's all the same right now is because they're, Aetna is newly back as a vendor. And there aren't enough people in the plan yet. And so as they get more people in, and what we're hoping is that this time next year, we're going to be able to say Aetna is a much cheaper plan, right? Or Horizon got cheaper than it was, like less expensive than it is for the current year and, and the coming year, right? That they're going to negotiate better rates with hospitals and doctors. And there'll be enough people in the Aetna plan to actually drive some competition. And we don't know, we know that isn't always how it works and the, the competition is up and higher costs and all that. And we're trying to avoid that. So if Aetna wants to get more of our members into their plan, they would probably want to have better pricing that helps the state and helps our members. And people might choose that. And then that would be the real variable, right? That, that cost of the plan would be lower. And then hopefully that would help Horizon set their prices lower or have their increases not be as high on a going forward basis. So we're really trying to control the cost here. And if Aetna could come in lower than Horizon, that would probably be to their advantage to, to get more members into the plan. But for this, for now, we're going to have to stick with all the rates are the same, at least for 2025.
Weren't you saying Pennsylvania though, that there would all be tier two, or does that not figure in right here?
But, well, she was talking about the 2019 plan.
Oh, okay. Nevermind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. No, I was asking for the tiered, it's, it will matter, right? Because you may, you'll find tier one in Aetna. So that would be the variable right now, that one particular plan. So I'm going to navigate to the dental. All right. Um, we're going to go through the state of New Jersey. I'm going to, I have to pick the links and add them to the, to that, but you should, people have access to that as long as they have that link. So when I add them in, you'll be able to go in and see hopefully direct links to the dental. So plan choices. And I'm hoping they're going to give us the dental rates. Dental providers. So someone was asking about the differences between the dental expense plans and the DPOs. And we can add this link in there. This is a state link to the.
You can't switch into 2019 if you were hired before 2019 anyway, right?
You, yes, you can. It's just not called 2019. Doesn't have 2019, right? And, and you don't have that hundred dollar deductible. If you were hired before seven, one, 2019. Okay.
No one would want to switch to 2019 because all that is the one with no numbers with a hundred dollar deductible.
Yeah. It won't be an option for you. It'll just say NJ Direct or it'll say Aetna Freedom. It won't have a number after it.
And if it is an option for you, somebody screwed up and you should fix it because you don't want a hundred dollar deductible.
And, and that's all linked to your date of hire. Okay. What was I doing here?
Thank you so much for clarifying that. At the benefits fair last week, HR and the rep from Aetna and the rep from Horizon all had it totally backwards. And I tried to show them like it, you put in your hire date, it doesn't give you the option. And they, they were trying to convince me that I was wrong.
No, it, the state website will, or the portal will give you exactly what you're eligible for. You can only be in like NJ Direct or NJ Direct 2019. And it's exactly higher related to your date of hire, as Ryan explained. Yep. You're right. All right. So I just added in the dental plan comparison in there and I'll just, I'll go back to that page. And I'm not a big expert on the dental plan. The, they just, they got rid of. So the only remaining plan options are the, there's a, an Aetna DPO. And there are now a Horizon and an Aetna DEP. And this plan chart, the comparison chart will tell you the differences. I will say that the DPO is like the HMO. There's no out of network benefit, right? So there's a network and there may not be a very big network. But if you can find a doctor or dentist that's in the DPO network, and this is again, where you do a little bit of homework. Find out if your current dentist that you like takes the DPO, then it might be lower cost and higher coverage. This one works. Lot of, like you'll go to the dentist, they say, we don't take insurance. You would pay everything and then you would apply for reimbursement up to what these amounts are if it's out of network. So that's really the benefits. You can see more dentists in and out of network under the DEP. I know that this goes in when members have certain procedures that need to be done. I know that they move from one plan to the other for that particular year to get that covered. I think it's orthodontics has a better coverage under one of these plans. Maybe that's listed here. So you can see I'm not as well brushed up on this as, as I am on the medical. But see, it mentioned here, but again, if you have a dentist, a regular dentist, and you like them, and you're thinking about switching plans, you can ask them these questions and say, do you take the DPO from the state? It's Aetna or the new, at Horizon dropped, I think their DPO and they added a dental expense plan. So that would be one difference here. And then I think there was a Cigna and a Marahell DPOs, they're both dropping off. And so if you're in any of those plans that are leaving, you'll default into the Aetna DPO if you don't make a choice during open enrollment. Because the deep, it's two DPOs that are leaving, they're going to put you in to the DPO if you don't make a decision by October 31st. Okay.
Joni asked a question, are all these dental plans Aetna? I could have sworn there was a Horizon plan, but I don't remember if that's leaving or coming.
And so as I just said, there's a Horizon, currently a DPO that's going away, but they're adding a dental expense plan. So the one with the in-network and out of network benefit. So there'll be two DEPs, dental expense plans, one from Horizon, one from Aetna. And then I think the only remaining DPO will be the Aetna DPO. Okay. I'm going to go back to my summary sheet.
One question before you go back.
Yeah.
So that deep DEP that we're seeing right now, is that the Horizon or the Aetna, or it's reflective for both?
The way it works is that, that it's, it functions the same. So really the question is, what's the network, right? It goes back to the medical question. Fits are all the same. What's covered is the same. I think the costs are even the same. So it's just a matter of, can you find a dentist that you like in network with either Horizon or Aetna? If you're thinking about the DEP for the DPO, it's just Aetna. You really only have one choice there.
So just to clarify, this, whether you choose the Aetna or Horizon DEP depends on whether your medical is Horizon, Horizon or Aetna?
Nope. Dental is separate. Dental's optional. You don't have to pick dental. But if you pick it, you can pick, you can have medical for other, for Horizon and dental for Aetna.
Okay.
Yeah. A lot of people have done that over the years.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome. I'm going to stop sharing.
Hi there. Can I ask a couple more dental questions?
You may. I'll try to answer them.
Okay. So I was looking earlier for the monthly costs for each of the plans and it was like blank. Um.
Hold on. I'm going to stop sharing because I do have something in my email and I'm going to pull that up and then share that screen because that has the rates. And I can't, I don't see them on the state's website, the rates. So we'll try to figure out how to get that out to folks. But you can probably screenshot what I put up. Hopefully I can pull it up. I'm going to let Ryan talk a little bit while I do that. Okay.
Yeah. There's actually a couple of questions we have not come back around to. I know that we had a complicated discussion about out of pocket maximums at one of the earlier meetings. And somebody asked a question about. at one of the earlier meetings and somebody asked a question about whether if it's listed four hundred dollars as an out of pocket maximum, is that all you can ever pay? And I remember there was a caveat for out of network care that you might be able to speak to.
Yeah, so I think there are in-network and out of network maximum out of pockets. And those are there mainly as breakers so that if you have any catastrophic illness come up in a given year, you're not going into medical debt. Hopefully you're not going into medical debt. And so it's there to say, once you hit that out of pocket maximum. But again, these aren't regular routine years, right? Where you're going to amass that much out of pocket. So don't let the number scare you. It's really so that people aren't going into huge amounts of debt because they have really high extraordinary expenses in a given year. That's the breaker to say everything is covered hundred percent after you hit those maximums. And let's see, dental. I'm gonna come back here. I'm going to share a screen again. And okay, here, I will find this on the site. I'll get the link because it looks like it's um, a document that was probably posted. And don't worry about the effective twelve twenty eight to twelve twenty six twenty twenty five. That's because this is they tend to do things for like the state workforce that are on central payroll. So their one year period are the pay cycles that I guess start on twelve twenty eight.
And man, about two hundred percent, Patrick.
Oh, yeah, let me do that.
Good to help. There we go. You're getting there.
I'll go even higher than that. All right, so yeah, don't worry about these dates here. This is just like it's for you, for us, it's the one one to twelve thirty one. Um, but this is bit coincides with state payroll um, cycles. So um, these are the rates. So Aetna Dental Expense Plan, you see Horizon Dental Expense Plan and Aetna DMO, it's the DPO. Um, so that's this is existing right now. The Aetna Dental Expense Plan is existing. Horizon dropped their DPO or DMO and added this dental expense plan. So they just switched what they're offering. So these are the rates. So you'll see that where they're offering the same plan, the DEP, the rates are all going to be the same. It goes back to that same premise that one of them, in this case Horizon, doesn't have enough people in the dental. So they're going to use the same rates based on the Aetna experience, the claims for the Aetna plan. So that's why they're going to look exactly the same. So these are bi-weekly dental rates. So this is every twice a month, not during the months where there's a third paycheck, right? So this will be twenty four pay periods for Rutgers employees and JIT. And and so you see the DMO is lower. I won't say if these are too high. Um, it's they've got the in and out of network benefit, right? And that's probably why the rates are higher. And these are, these are not escalating. It's not progressive. It's, you know, no matter what your salary is, these are going to be the rates. Okay, so it looks like it's about a fifty fifty. The member pays just slightly less than fifty percent of the cost. So that is a PDF I have, so I'll find that on the state's website and add it to that summary document. This document, okay? All right, I see the question.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for sharing the uh, monthly costs. So I just want to make sure I understand. I feel like in the past when I enrolled, there were like DHMOs and DPOs. And I was on Cigna, whichever the Cigna was. And so I know I'm going to be on the Aetna if I don't do anything. Is that Aetna DPO like the same how you plan as what I, okay, so it's the same.
Yeah, they're just random differently, but it's essentially the same thing. There's no out of network benefit. You have to find a dentist that takes that plan.
Okay, and then when you say we can look for who takes Aetna or Horizon by going through the same link, but choosing searching for dentists, the dentists, the two Aetna, the DEP and the DPO are both going to be the same list of dentists? Or I thought the DPOs were like more limited?
Yeah, what I've heard is that, yeah, a lot of dentists don't sign up for DPOs. And probably there aren't many more in a DEP. So people pick the DEP because it has an out of network benefit.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to, because I saw some of the breakdown that it looked like, for example, like a Crown had a co-pay of, I think like one fifty to two twenty five or something. But then on the for the DPO, the DEP, it was like sixty or seventy percent covered or something. And I feel like two twenty five is going to be cheaper than that. My understanding, I'd rather just spring for the more expensive plan if I get more coverage and things are cheaper. But I couldn't tell if things were actually going to individual procedures were going to be cheaper. I don't know if that question makes sense.
I, it makes sense. I don't have an answer, though, because I when they talk a percentage of this and a dollar amount for that, it's hard to know. Because.
Okay, yeah.
Rider, the dentist is setting um, what they're going to charge you, right? And if they're, it's like medical, right? If they're out of network, they're going to, they're probably going to charge you more. And they may take the state's payment as payment in full and not balance bill you. They're not going to say, we want to collect the the difference between that, but some will. And so that's the risk when you you go out of network. But again, it's it's actually like behavioral health. It's really hard to find dentists that are in network, right?
Okay, yeah.
Have to pay.
Honestly, I've just had trouble finding a dentist that isn't crappy on like the Cigna DPO. So I guess if I'm willing to spring for the DEP.
Yep.
At least I can shop around a little more. And okay, I'm sorry, this, these are way more confusing than the health care to me.
Yeah, yeah, that maybe that's why I haven't learned it fully because it's hard. Here's I want to show you, this is what's on the state plan. So right now in twenty twenty four, you have a Horizon Dental Choice, which is a the a DPO. Aetna DPO, which is staying. You have MetLife, which is going away. And then you have dental expense plan, it says it's Aetna because you can see it over here. And then Cigna Dental Health, that's going away. So there's a note down here, effective January one twenty twenty five, one DPO will be available at an DMO. And two dental expense plans will be available, Aetna and Horizon. So that's their note to tell you.
Yes.
The choices are not available any longer. So you read the asterisks here, which is like not great because they could have just updated this to stay. These are your choices and taken off MetLife and Cigna and changed the Horizon one. But the.
People who are still signing up could have it till the end of the year or something or?
New employees at this rate, they have a two month wait if they're twelve months, so probably not. But yeah, conceivably if they're, maybe they started in September, they could like not like ten month employees at Rutgers and and JIT maybe that don't have the waiting period. So yeah, that's possible that folks can could have signed up. But I think at this point, this is for January one, so right now.
I found the missing cost chart that you were looking for and I put it in the chat a couple minutes ago.
Oh, great. Thank you. I'll pull it from there. And yeah, I we are not, I may have said earlier that we're doing this again tomorrow. We are not. We're doing these on next. So I think it's Tuesday afternoon at twelve. And then at six PM and then on Wednesday morning at nine AM. So what we're really doing is trying to find different times so that um, we're accommodating people's schedules. And hopefully late afternoon today, noon next week, Tuesday evening and Wednesday morning, give people enough of a very variations on times to to make at least one of these.
I don't know that we know the answer to this one, but somebody asked if they changed their plan already and have changed their mind. Can they do it through the state website or are they going to need to make a phone call or are they stuck or what?
No, you can go back in and and change. So then it's not going to, they're not going to process anything until November one at the earliest. They're going to let people go in, change, which you can change nine, ten, twenty times. Don't do it. But yeah, if you've heard something here or you've just reconsidered uh, independent, you either want to go back to what you had or make a different choice, you can totally do that up until um, the end of open enrollment.
There's a couple of other things we've talked about in other ones and didn't quite get around to. Just be mindful that there are wellness benefits for all of these plans. I am blanking on the name for the Aetna one. They call it Horizon Be Fit and NJ Well for Horizon. And if you look around, one of them will, if you have a device that can record walking, if you get ten thousand steps in a day, twelve times a month, you get twenty dollars a month. If you do the various NJ things or the Aetna equivalent, you can get it like a two hundred and fifty dollar credit, not credit. They give you a check card that you can use wherever. And those are ways to offset costs a little bit for doing things you should really do anyway, if you can. The Horizon also has a thing where you can, you basically take a post-workout selfie if you've been at home working out as an alternative, as long as you work out twenty minutes. And that's people should take advantage of that because that's free money, basically. There were one or two other questions we never got around to that I'm just looking for right now. Somebody asked the four hundred dollar co-insurance maximum. Does that in fact mean what they're expecting, which is that they pay co-pays until they hit four hundred dollars and that's the max for the year? They're asking about it was NJ Direct fifteen is where they saw that.
On the medical, no. So co-insurance is not co-pay. Co-pay is like when you go see the doctor or your co-pay when you go to the ER or urgent care. Co-insurance is not on all services or right? It's my understanding that it applies mostly to like durable medical equipment or like ambulance, right? So if you get in an ambulance and it's not, but those are the areas where and most people don't have them. And so when you design a plan, I guess that's what you do is you put like co-insurance on certain things that don't impact everybody, but some people may have to pay it. And I don't know, they I don't know if they think people take joy rides in ambulances. And so they say there's a co-insurance on that and you have to pay a share of it. Or people go and get wheelchairs and they don't really need them. I don't know what the the logic is behind that, but it's like for specific things. And it's usually my understanding is durable medical equipments, ambulances. So that's the best, to the best of my knowledge.
That's something I need to say, by the way, earlier that the one, the major places to watch out for if you are looking at NJ Direct fifteen and NJ Direct or NJ Direct twenty nineteen, the ER co-pay goes up, which if you're somebody who for some reason uses the ER a lot, watch out for that. The specialist co-pay doubles. So if you're somebody, we had examples of people who go to physical therapy twice a week. That quickly adds up, so watch out for that. And also the family cost increase or the plans where you're covering more than yourself are the ones where the increase is a lot of money in actual dollars. If you have single coverage, for me, I'm not moving plans because it's not really worth those other things that I have. But family coverage, it can be thousands of dollars. So that's just something to look out for.
I think we're going to end for the night. So if anybody have a last comment or question?
Hi.
I I can give an example about the deductible and co-insurance. Recently I had gone to see a podiatrist. And since I have seen my primary care doctor so many times, they have added my co-pay, which is like fifteen dollars for the whole year. And I was done with my deductible, which was hundred dollars. So my insurance company said if I need an orthotics, my deductible is covered, it's done. And I have to only pay ten percent of the co-insurance. So it is only for the orthotics.
That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you for. I appreciate that. So thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And you're more than welcome to come back, but please spread the word uh, to your colleagues and tell them to come out if they have any questions, all right?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so this is where I'll say to folks, if this has been helpful, let us know. You can do a thumbs up, say something in the chat. We want to know that we should continue to do these type of things and it's helpful. And join your union, get involved in your union, encourage other folks to come out if you think this is helpful. And you think it will help them, just spread the good word that the your unions are fighting for you. And you're the union, join the fight. And we are going to over the next year, between now and next June, really put a big push and run a hopefully a big public campaign to control the cost, meaning what the state pays to different hospitals and and providers so that we can lower rates or at least control the rates. So you're not seeing big increases and you can have good quality plans at not exorbitant prices. And we need leaders in those fights. And if you're willing to be involved, I'm going to come back to all of you in a second, get you back on my screen. And I will drop into the chat my my email address for our Rutgers AAU P AFT and our NJIT members. But again, if your unions don't mind and you want to reach out with any questions, I can either get you to your union or just identify yourself or answer it and copy in your unions there where. But again, you have other union leaders that are here, your union leaders, your stewards, reps, liaisons. And we use different terms for the person that works side by side with you that is your representatives. Definitely reach out for them through them too. And again, get involved in these fights that we're constantly having to fight with the bosses here at Rutgers and NJIT and UH. And also with the state and with these health insurance companies and hospitals and and providers. I want to thank Ryan for jumping in, Megumi, Megumi and and Christine and all of your unions and all of you as members. Take care.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Oh, sorry, somebody is Albert, if you're having trouble with those links, I've seen occasional problems with our union website links. Just go right to hpa.org and you can click from the dropdown list. I don't know why sometimes those links don't work out, but they normally do.
Thanks, all.